Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. And I would note that Teresa Phillips has asked to be excused today. She has a family issue that requires her personal attention today. With that, Ms. Wood, could you call the roll?
Mr. Clausen?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Upchurch?
Here.
Yes, and as Mr. Taylor just noted, Ms. Phillips and I believe Mr. Schwartz are both absent and excused today.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Matt, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance today?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Without any further ado, then let's jump right into the. Well, before we jump into the work session, does anybody have any questions about the agenda for today's work session? If not, let's go ahead and start with C1, the Capital Recovery and Reinvestment Program that Schneider Electric is prepared to present to us today.
So, Mr. Taylor, if I may, let me just do a very quick introduction. We've got three representatives from Schneider Electric, and I just wanted to set the stage from the standpoint that we have been engaged in some exploration and opportunity related to the types of services that you're going to hear more about from Schneider in their presentation. I will just say that it's been really helpful from the standpoint of everything that we've learned over the past few months and the rapport that has been generated and the depth of which I believe Schneider has worked to come alongside and learn more about Lewis Palmer School District 38, as well as help us understand what opportunities are available. So, we're excited to have with us here today. We've got Will Benish, Kathleen Pratt, and Robert Davidson. So, without further ado, I'm going to let them take it from here and work through a presentation, and there'll be opportunity for questions as we go.
Thank you so much, Dr. Somers. We appreciate that. And thank you to the Board of Education for allowing myself, Kathleen, and Robert to be able to speak this morning. I know we do have 45 minutes, so I'll share my screen right away if that works with everybody. Get right to that. So, please let me know if you can see my screen here, this PowerPoint that's popped up.
I can't yet.
Not yet. How about now? Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I'm just going to switch this up. I hate when this pops up like that. No worries.
Sounds good, Will.
Great. Well, with that being said, once more, you know, thank you to the Board of Education for allowing us to come in. I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving break, a well-deserved break with all that is going on. And first off, I'd like to thank the team from Lewis Palmer School District that has been such a help and an incredible advocate for our team, but also such a support for our team as we've completed our analysis for this program. So, Dr. Somers, Mr. Foster, Danny, and Shanna have been extremely helpful in this process. In today's presentation, you know, we will be going through some of the work that we've done so far with the district, but we'd also like to gain feedback from this Board of Education on our thoughts around this program and if, you know, really with the scope of work that we're implementing, what feels right for the district and what scope really does make the most sense at this time. I do want to ask, for the 45 minutes that we do have, would you prefer, and Dr. Somers, I might toss this to you, would you prefer for us to answer questions as we go or perhaps save them towards the end just for the sake of time? Keep keeping everything, trying to keep track of time? What feels best for your team?
Mr. Taylor, do you have a preference or Mr. Clausen, Ms. Upchurch?
I don't have a preference one way or the other.
I don't have a preference. I can either ask as we go or I can write my questions down and save them to the end.
Yeah, I'm fine with either scenario. Question that I would have for you, what would be most efficient for you?
Great question. Thank you so much. Well, I know, you know, that there's a lot of new information coming up here. I would say if there is a question that comes up, feel free to stop us during the presentation. We can answer it right then and there, just with the information on screen, if that works for your team.
Great.
Awesome.
Sounds good, Will.
Great. Well, with that being said, taking a look at our agendas today, our presentation will cover the partnership that District 38 and Schneider Electric have begun to develop over the last, gosh, four to five months at this point. You know, even through the heart of COVID, we've been able to get a lot of work done. And again, want to commend that District 38 team that's been assisting us in that process. And so, with that being said, let's get right into it. So, who is Schneider Electric? As you could see right up there, we're an energy services company, and we develop capital recovery and reinvestment programs for Colorado school districts. What does that mean? So, essentially, we develop comprehensive energy efficiency projects for school districts, finding where the largest unfunded needs are inside their facilities, and we reinvest them utilizing energy savings that are guaranteed over time. Colorado defines this, and we define this as energy services performance contracting. And we've been in this business for close to 30 years now. We've developed over 850 projects nationwide and have guaranteed over $2 billion in the process. One thing to note, you know, our projects, they are focused, are facility-focused, but especially with our school districts, there's a huge focus around the stakeholders, whether it's internal stakeholders, your students, your faculty, your teachers, your Board of Education, as well as external stakeholders, your community members. So, a large chunk of our, a large chunk of our work does involve, you know, branding this positive story and having engagement events, like the event you see in the bottom right corner there where we had solar car racing at Holyoke School District last year. So, we'll talk more about that as we go through, but just important to understand that we are here to develop a partnership with our clients, with our school districts. Notice, as I sat down with Dr. Somers late in July, actually virtually for the first time, we began to speak through some of, yes, the biggest needs at the district, but also understanding the mission and the strategic vision that has been put in place, understanding those five strategic goals. So, yes, we are working with the district to determine those unfunded needs, but also wanting to really get a good grasp on that strategic vision. What does the one, three, five-year timeline in your strategic planning look like? And how can we assist in that process? So, starting from that first conversation in July, leading up to the month of October, we presented a business case analysis where we shared, after being onsite for two full days with Danny and Bob, looking at every single school, seeing where the largest amount of deferred maintenance is, as well as the biggest need based on, you know, the folks that are on the front lines like Danny Sandoval and his team, we developed a business case that shared the cost savings potential for a scope of work, as well as what the connection between our project proposal and the district's strategic vision looks like. It is a high-level report, and I believe we, you know, Dr. Somers has that report. More than welcome to share it with the Board of Education if you haven't seen it already. But at that level, we want to take a deeper dive after that report into our investment-grade audit, which is essentially what would come next. So, we would take the time to finalize a project, work with the district intently in deciding what a final scope of work looks like, what the cost of a project would look like, how the project would be funded, and from there, plan out a timeline as the project goes on. So, with that being said, are there any questions before we keep going just about how we got to where we are today?
Just a point, a point of clarification is this did not include Grace Best, correct?
Correct, yes. There was no work completed in our analysis of Grace Best.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, just out of curiosity. Case, Dr. Somers, how did we come to partner with Schneider?
Actually, Schneider reached out to us late summer and just initiated an opportunity to have some dialogue about what services and scope of work they may be able to offer. So, we were open to sitting down to have that conversation and learning more. And from there, there's been multiple conversations along the way. What I can tell you is, in summary, as we've learned more about the opportunity that has, is there, I mean, it was a little bit surprising to me that we hadn't already explored the potential of it sometime earlier, but I think it was just a function of maybe not being aware of what was available, other barriers perhaps, but at the end of the day, I think as we learn more about what was available to us, we would have felt remiss if we didn't take the opportunity to delve into that learning and be able to share with you what we've learned up to this point and potential next steps from here.
Thank you, Dr. Somers, and great questions. And we'll talk more about how this partnership has grown. Actually, the next slide actually goes through more of the solution we're trying to develop. The project objectives, as we like to call them, there are four that stand out to us. Resolving short- and long-term deferred maintenance issues, reducing energy costs and consumption, creating a sustainable funding mechanism. And what we mean by that is, is understanding how we could set a project up that prepares Lewis Palmer for future capital budgeting with a project in place. And this was something that Dr. Somers and I discussed, you know, around the business case presentation time, wanting to see how are we preparing, how are we utilizing our taxpayer dollars as efficiently and effectively as possible? And finally, demonstrating that community equity. And we, I know this has been brought up before, I've listened in on those board work sessions earlier this fall, and in understanding how we can communicate and be completely transparent with the community that, you know, not just the people that are on this call and in this room understand, but, you know, all of your stakeholders have a say and have an understanding of what this project can produce for this district. So, these four goals really have led us that direction. So, how does our program work? And we use this, we use this bar chart, this illustration here is, we feel it's, it's the most digestible way to understand how, how it happens. So, essentially, on the left here, we develop a baseline utility spend. So, your energy bill, your electric, your natural gas, your water spend, your operational and maintenance spend on an annual basis. And Lewis Palmer spends around $1.5 million a year on these utilities. Once a project is implemented, where we are replacing that deferred maintenance, recommissioning, getting whatever work, whatever scope of work needs to get done, we're going to see on an annual basis that the energy bill and the operational spend is reduced dramatically. And from that, we are developing savings. Those savings are energy and operational savings, and they're guaranteed by Schneider Electric. We'll talk about that guarantee here in a little bit. But from that, those savings are essentially utilized to fund the project over time on an annual basis. So, we typically see that our projects are financed over time through a traditional tax exempt lease purchase agreement, where again, we're looking at a scenario where the savings that we're developing from the district have to be the same amount or greater than the annual payment the district would make. So, you're looking at a cost-neutral or cash-positive scenario each year for this project, which, again, for school districts where we understand margins are so tight, this serves as an appropriate and effective, you know, funding tool in itself. And this is not just, you know, my team coming in and talking about it like this. This is a state-supported program by the state of Colorado, and there are some supporting statutes that you see here to the right that I'm more than happy to share. They're not as long and dry as you might think. They're pretty easy and digestible to read. But again, a state-supported program. We're also a pre-qualified and pre-certified partner of the Colorado Energy Office to perform this kind of work. And Dr. Somers and his team have already had the chance to speak with a few representatives from the Energy Office itself, just to get an understanding of what their services look like. So, again, a state-supported program and often utilized by school districts that don't have the on-hand funding to get it all done at once. This is a different way of looking at it. I'll stop here. You know, a lot of information being tossed out there. Any, any thoughts around how this program works? Any questions, making sure there is clear understanding of it? Wonderful. Okay, well, if anything, anything comes up like that, feel free. So, even beyond our, our look at how the program works, we also want to talk about how this program, it's not business as usual. It is a differentiating program. And even beyond that, how is Schneider Electric a different provider for that as well? So, we're talking about a customized project solution. I mentioned earlier how we're trying to attach this to the strategic vision of Lewis Palmer, and this could literally mean us picking and choosing each scope item in our scope matrix that makes the most sense and fits the need for District 38. We're going to, we're going to talk about a high-level matrix scope from the business case analysis just here in a bit. But again, really trying to focus on how customized can we get it from the facilities measures, from the funding component? We want to be able to listen to the district when it comes to that perspective. Outside of that, the guaranteed results, I mentioned that word, the guarantee, and those savings are guaranteed by Schneider Electric so much where if they are not met on an annual basis, Schneider Electric will write a check to cover the difference. Now, we don't write very many checks, but we will do everything in our power if there is an issue to resolve, whatever issue it might be. And if, and if needed, you know, where savings are not being met, Schneider Electric will write a check. One-company accountability, this is something that, you know, I remember hearing Danny Sandoval bring it up at the business case analysis. He was asking us, you know, Schneider is taking care of this audit that's coming up, but how about have you taken into account, you know, bringing on engineers, architects, subcontractors? That are responsibility. So, it's important to note, you only have to work with one company when, when we take on this capital project. Typically, with these heavy intensive projects, there's a lot of contractors running around. It becomes, you know, we don't want to see any situations where there's finger pointing or blaming. There is really only one organization that brings on any subcontractors, engineers that we, that we design and we audit the process. We guarantee the work after it's done. It's all through Schneider Electric, which takes some of the, some of the workload, especially off your maintenance team, that'll be working closely with ours. And finally, that facilities and funding solution. I brought it up a little bit earlier, but I know there's been discussion in these board meetings about, you know, that level-two analysis, that discussion of, okay, what do we need to do each year? Should we, should we take a slice of the pie out? We know whether it's from our reserves, whether it's from our general fund to take care of some of these needs, this solution allows all of the district's needs to be taken care, taken care of in one project. And Robert and I will talk about this a little bit later, but this really does serve as a truly comprehensive project in that regard. So, when it comes to those differentiators there. There are five components of this project that we'll dive into, that we really feel do attach to the strategic vision of Lewis Palmer. We know there are five goals. We want to try to attach them if possible. Starting off with funding, we're looking at a program where the district could reinvest close to $10 million in sunk utility costs back into their schools. And we know that the strategic goal number four is really the main theme, the main goal that we're trying to attach this to. So, we do see that sort of connection with this reinvestment of, of savings that are, that are existing inside of the schools today. The deferred maintenance component, obviously the face of the project. You know, we're taking a look at the long list of things that need to get taken care of at this district. And not only are we going to be updating the equipment where it is today, but we're going to be trying to take care of some of the work, taking some of the workload off Danny and Mr. Foster's backs when it comes to taking care of these needs, you know, make it easier for them. And a lot of the deferred maintenance that we'll be reducing will allow that to be done, helping to address that first strategic goal of a safe and welcoming school environment. The efficiency component, did mention a little bit earlier, district spending about $1.5 million each year. And the solution that we're providing is going to be seeing a reduction in energy and operational spend by nearly 25%. Translates to close to $350,000 a year in annual savings. Again, attaching itself to that fourth strategic goal of ensuring, you know, the efficient use of resources in that sense. So, the three that I just mentioned to you, the funding, the deferred maintenance, and efficiency are really focused on the facility measure. The next one that we have here is communication. So, in conversations with the leadership team at District 38, we understand, you know, there's always the need for further transparency to community stakeholders, ensuring there's effective communication. We know there's, you know, strategic goal number five. There's a goal that's focused on that. The district's done a wonderful job in that process so far. But with a capital project like this, again, we want to make sure there is that full transparency. So, we do have an in-house marketing team that often works with communication teams at our school districts to develop a marketing plan and communicate this initiative from whatever media platform is necessary. It's a huge chunk of our project initiative, and we never leave it out because it is so, so important. And we'll share some examples here in a little bit for what that communication looks like. And lastly, our student engagement piece. Brought up a picture a little bit earlier from some solar car racing, but we often try and connect our school district projects with how to get students involved. So, whether these are Earth Day-based events, STEM-related activities, job shadowing, whatever it might be, our team is dedicated to allowing students to understand why this project is so important. And frankly, more often than not, we often see that students behaviorally act more efficient. They'll remember to turn the lights off. And I know the district already has those remember-to-turn-your-lights-off signs underneath each, each, each switch there. But again, just a way to keep students involved and ensure, you know, that we really are trying to develop that partnership there. So, based on those five sort of components that you saw there, I'll stop once more. Any thoughts or questions on those components and sort of how we're trying to make this as comprehensive as possible?
I don't have a question directly regarding the components, but, you know, the points that you bring up, a lot of good thinking there. Are you working with any other districts in the Colorado Springs area? And if not in Colorado, that you've, you've tried implementing these goals with?
Absolutely, yes, definitely. I would say none in the Colorado Springs-specific area, but we have completed other student engagement activities and communication activities at other Colorado school districts, one recently being at Holyoke School District, where we completed not just Earth Day, Earth Day activities there last year, but also a marketing plan in place where we're focusing on, okay, we found out actually the most-used media platform that that city was using was through their radio station. So, we're looking to have their superintendent broadcast what this project looks like throughout this radio station that they have. So, really working with the district in ways that, you know, you may think, hey, social media is the best way to do it, but it may not always be like that. So, working with districts to be able to find out whatever opportunity might, might work best.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure. Great question. Absolutely. All right, let's keep on going. So, jumping into the scope of work and keeping track of time here, we developed two projects for our business case analysis, really. The first being the base project of what you see here today. So, on the left here, we have our scope matrix with each of our line items spread out. And on the right side here, the accompanying energy and operational savings and lifecycle energy savings that are associated. Now, with the base project, we focused on a few things. We focused on a scope of work that would not only take care of many of the most immediate needs at Lewis Palmer, but also focused on the, the components that develop the highest amount of savings or in financial terms, the highest return on your investment, where we know at the end of the day, this is a self-funding solution, a solution that's going to develop a ton of energy savings for the district and at the end of the day, get a lot of the work that needs to be done and taken care of. So, on the right side there, you see that we're looking at $270,000 in energy and operational savings on an annual basis. And then over a 20-year lifecycle, which is typically the weighted average useful life for the equipment that's being installed, the district's going to be capturing nearly $8 million in energy and operational savings with this base-specific project. I'll pause here. I'll turn it to Robert Davidson. Robert, anything to add on this base project? Anything that you wanted to toss in there before moving on to Enable?
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal here is to really try to capture as much energy savings as is feasible and financially responsible. So, we've got some really good targeted solutions, like putting variable frequency drives on some of your HVAC equipments, when bigger units have a good opportunity to be much more efficient while providing better comfort. And then some of the things you don't really think about, like plug-load controls. You've got smart boards and printers and peripheral electronics devices that aren't used overnight, that aren't used on the weekends, that aren't used in the summers. There's a good opportunity to make sure there's no phantom loads there and really try to reduce the utility costs and maintenance costs as much as possible so that you can redirect those funds to something more productive.
Absolutely. Definitely. And, and really, the combination of this base project alongside the following project that we developed is our Enable project. So, the Enable project is the second project we developed. It has everything included from the base project alongside the other measures that are colored in with the, with green over here on the left side there. Those specific measures are typically more capital-intensive. They, they cost more. They still do generate savings, as you do see, the annual savings are now close to $340,000 a year. But from a cost perspective, it really is taking care of everything that we have heard of at this point from the district. So, yes, we have those boilers at Lewis Palmer and Bear Creek on there. You know, we have the things that are really priority number one here and allowing those savings from the other base project initiative work, like LED lighting, to help offset the cost of all of these more capital-intensive needs. And at the end of the day, we're looking at a project where maybe in between the base and Enable project that could make the most sense for Lewis Palmer, literally, like I said, picking and choosing what scope measures do make the most sense at this time. Yeah, absolutely. So, taking a look there at the right there, closer, a larger lifecycle savings number of close to $9.5 million in lifecycle energy savings. And Robert did touch on a few items here, and I know that he'll want to touch on the critical measures to address. This is sort of a culmination of the last two slides there. You know, we were asked by the district really to understand, okay, at the end of the day, what are the biggest needs? Where do you see the most attention need to be drawn to? What are those critical measures? And how can we, how can we address them all? So, we thought these four do stand out, and I'll turn it over to Robert to talk a little bit about them.
Yeah, and our study, our several days onsite and working closely with Bob and Danny to really understand some of the challenges around the district. Some of the biggest things that popped up to us were the infrastructure challenges on the HVAC side, especially at Lewis Palmer Middle School. The boilers there could be a safety concern. They're on their last legs and are running out of life. We think there's a good opportunity to replace them in a very efficient way. And really critically, they're getting rid of the evaporative cooling solution. So, you don't have traditional mechanical cooling at Lewis Palmer Middle School, and it's a comfort nightmare for students. So, we think there's a really good opportunity to go bring in traditional modern cooling into the building and really improve the learning environment for those kids. Security is obviously a critical need for the district. You've got great vestibules at a lot of your schools to ensure that people can't just come in through the front door and have access to the entire building. But a few of the elementary schools are lacking those, and we think there's an opportunity to get those in and make sure those students can be safe. Lighting is a huge opportunity. As Will said, there is a really good chance for some energy savings by moving to LED lighting, both inside and outside the building. It improves the learning environment. Student test scores have shown to improve across the country whenever lighting levels are increased and improved with better quality. And of course, there's a security improvement as well on the outside with consistent standard lighting that's focused downwards, not producing upward light pollution, but really brightening the exterior of your buildings. And then the last one, whoo, I had a fun time talking with Danny about the details of your building automation system. You have three different platforms, four different user interfaces. You've got nine different air compressors, making sure that the heating and air conditioning works across your schools. When we surveyed them, we took pictures of the different thermostats we saw and came back with 25 different models of thermostats around the buildings. It's a huge challenge for training, for maintenance, for comfort. It's a huge challenge for training, for maintenance, for comfort and efficiency. So we want to make sure that the building automation system that runs the heating and cooling across the campuses. Is consistent on as few platforms as possible that is brought back to its original design intent and configuration. And can be operated smoothly without a bunch of headaches and hurdles for Danny and his team.
Thoughts or questions?
Yeah, Dr. Summers, I have a question here. When we talk about the annual savings, there's the energy, which I'm assuming is just pure energy savings from our utility companies. And then there's something called O and M or operational and maintenance. Now, are these opportunity costs? In other words, are these real cash savings? Or is this just free up people to do something else? I'm trying to understand. Whether or not that O and M is actual real dollar savings or is it just opportunity cost savings?
So I can chime in there. Those numbers, as they're presented to this point, are material savings. They're not labor savings. They're not reallocating Danny and his team. Their replacement lamps and ballasts on the lighting side. Water fixtures and bathrooms, those air compressors, the licenses to maintain those building automation systems. They're true line items in the operations budget that aren't reallocating labor or opportunity costs.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
I had a question. When you were talking about, just for example, the. The mechanical upgrades on on Lewis Palmer Middle School, for example. How often have you, when you've been partnering with other districts, how often have you been able to incorporate or look at? Best grant money in these upgrades and changes?
Yeah, definitely. Great question. And you know, often, well, in every project that we work on, we often look to see where there are grant incentives. Also rebate incentives, whatever kind of opportunity that might look like. Often organizations like BEST. Like DOLA, Department of Local Affairs have grant opportunities that they very much understand how our program works. And often our projects, actually, these energy performance contracts that you see in Colorado often do. If possible, overlap with the best grant work. And I know that our team has already communicated with Kathy Wilcox on the grant writing team. As well as representatives from BEST itself. I know that the the district representative of BEST is well aware of the preliminary work that we're completing. And essentially, when it comes to the application process, I know you're talking about that Lewis Palmer Middle Boiler. We're looking at a solution here where we can assist the district in whatever way possible. In that application process and making sure that they can get every, you know, opportunity to receive that best grant funding. But again, those dollars would be used as that upfront contribution. To this project, sort of just as a capital contribution. And at the end of the day, it would actually reduce the payback period. That the district would be repaying this project on an annual basis. And we understand with the best grant, there is a matching component. And for for our projects implemented, that matching component would be funded by the savings itself. So it's, 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 it's a collaborated process and we're well aware of the dates and timelines for the best grant. We're doing everything in our power to hopefully connect the work at Lewis Palmer Middle at that boiler alongside this project. I know in the new year, we'll have further conversations around it. Robert, did you want to add anything on the best grant program as well? I know that you and I were part of that conversation.
Yeah, it could just be very seamlessly integrated in this kind of project with the best grant. You don't have to select a. A vendor partner when you put in your application. So if the money comes through, something like that could be rolled into a project like this very easily. And if the money doesn't come through, this is a great way to make sure that that solution is prioritized for the things that are most critical for the district.
So Holyoke would be a great example of a school district that would easily qualify for best grant over someone like us. Have did have have they tried to go through that process?
So with Holyoke, they did receive a best grant recently. It wasn't through the scope of work wasn't included in our project. And I would have to say there's no, it's not a more favorable application. If it's mentioned that you're working with an energy services company to complete this kind of work. Because we understand how competitive it might be, but they do very much understand how the work can be interlaced. And when it comes to May, when you're presenting your case. We see value in presenting, hey, Schneider Electric completed an investment grade audit. We're really looking to incorporate this work. You know, please keep that in mind as you're moving forward. So but in regards to Holyoke's case, there wasn't a connection with the best grant there.
Great questions there, Tiffany. I wanted to follow up on that best grant. So the timing of that is normally those are due. In January, February timeframe, is that right, Dr. Summers?
That's correct. And what I can tell you is that we are still in the research. Phase of how we're putting putting together our final application. So. We're exploring every option that's available right now as we work to finalize what we will officially land on. So we can have that update for you all as we get further into January and let you know exactly where we land there.
Very good. And then one point of clarification on the slide that's up now, I see that we're talking about security vestibules at. Those Palmer Elementary and Palmer or Prairie Winds Elementary. But on the slide just previously, the security vestibule also had a green box under Bear Bear Creek, I believe.
That's correct, Chris.
Ah, yes. Hey, great crap and great catch, Chris. Thank you for bringing that up as well. Yes, we're hoping to implement the security vestibule at Bear Creek as well. That's, that's, that's my fault. I missed saw that in the scope of work. Great catch, though.
So it is included in your, in your work?
Yes, yes, it is. Yes, it was. It's the need of addition into slide number into number two over here.
All right, thank you.
And if I may there, Chris, that's a great example of what we still have yet to finally decide on where we. Envision the reinvestment of these savings going into what particular projects as a priority. So it's certainly. One of our top priorities, as we've already called out through previous discussions. Around goal one and making sure that we have a game plan there. So our thought would be this is one viable way to go forward. With addressing the installation of those vestibules as early as this summer.
I think it's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, for the 10 minutes or so that we do have left, we'll run through the rest of this presentation. Talking about marketing and sustainability, again, large component of our projects. We've already begun to work on certain things in our business case analysis for the district, like a custom logo that you've been seeing on some of the other slides. As well as some digital messaging materials. The one on the left here is an example of a webpage installation that we can make on the district's website. With the utilization of our marketing graphic designs team, as well as on the right side of digital messaging. Email blast platform that we can send out to community stakeholders. These are things that our marketing team are very, very familiar with. Alongside that physical signage and digital media signage that we can implement as well. In the left here, Snowline Joint Unified School District. I know that's one of Kathleen's projects itself. And you know, with everything that you see on the screen here, Kathleen, I guess, how effective has marketing been in some of the projects that you've been a part of? Especially during construction?
Yeah, thanks. Well, I would just say, you know, the marketing component of these projects is surprisingly effective. And I would say in the last five years in particular, I think I've been doing this for about 12 years now. And then the last five, I feel like transparency and the need for communication and effective communication. With stakeholders and the community has just grown and grown and grown. And so we found a lot of creative ways to. Help, I guess, present this information and let the community know what is being done and why it's so positive. And so there's just, there's a lot of ways to do it. We've even done some three-minute like YouTube videos that are really professionally done that have a huge impact. So they're just, I guess, the bottom line is there are so many ways we can help communicate the positive story of the district. And it doesn't just need to be about the actual project itself. It can be highlighting all kinds of things that the district wants to get out there. So it would really be a tailored marketing campaign specific to Lewis Palmer.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kathleen. The component outside of the communication piece, we spoke about student engagement. Just wanted to share a few examples. You know, again, looking at, looking at activities that range in ages for students as well. We often see these activities being thrown out during during Earth Day or the week of Earth Day in April. As well as Energy Pledge Month, which is the month of October. But even during our project development time, we've had engineers. On site, leading these, leading these activities for students, whether it's the solar car racing, allowing students to make green pledges. Developing vertical plant walls, using recycled plastic water bottles for tree planting activities. These are all items and activities that are included in our project to again emphasize the importance of not just what we're being done. But energy conservation and allow students and of course, who do students talk to? Their parents. Allow parents to be able to see. Sort of the exciting things that are happening here. So just a few examples of the student engagement piece. And to just add on to that, I'll turn it over to Robert once more to briefly bring up conserve my planet, which is an ongoing program through Schneider Electric. Robert, do you want to talk about your experience there?
Yeah, this is one of my favorite things that we get to do is just trying to engage with the students and make sure that they're, they're part of the solution, right? We make all these infrastructure improvements, but we really want to touch the occupants as well. I just love that we do little competitions and get the students involved. They get the chance to kind of boss around their teachers and watch them when they make energy mistakes and slip ups to try to. You know, really be part of the community and part of the solution. It's just a lot of fun, a big part of what we bring together. And then some of the other things that we have throughout the the long-term part of the project is a resource advisor. It's a platform. It's a kind of single. Paint of glass, one stop shop for all of your your utility information. You can have all of your data stored there. It's really easy to understand it, get reports. Know how the project is performing and how the district is performing from a utility management standpoint. And then we have a client services partnership that's long term. We realize that Danny's team is focused on safety, on reliability, on comfort. And energy is important, but those other things always come before that. So. We're there to provide support to go measure the performance of the project, give feedback about how things are going. Have a 24/7 hotline with people staffed in America who can answer his questions and challenges about stuff. Provide ongoing training as your team turns over in the future. And just make sure that everyone is well informed about the performance of the project and making the good choices necessary to sustain energy saving success.
Thank you, Robert. Absolutely.
I have a question there.
Yes.
So those are. Those, there's, are there costs associated with that ongoing support, the client services? Or is this all built into the initial program and what's included is ongoing or is there, are there costs associated with it?
I think the short answer is yes to both. So there are costs associated with it, but as Will was saying, the financial model is such that. Your payments every year must be covered by the savings and those payments include both. The principal interest payments for the capital lease and any payments for services that are built in. So it's part of the financial package of what is presented when the project is brought together.
All right. So it's in the financial model.
That's correct.
As a separate, I've got it. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I know with just a few minutes left, wanted to finish up with what comes next. Essentially, we're looking at that investment grade audit. That's the, that's the next step here. So with that being said, a IGA contract. Which we've already sent over to the district. To begin reviewing, we're hoping to be approved. This, this December, trying to get it done before the end of the year. So we could be able to kick off the investment grade audit in January. What a great way to start 2021. But again, the IGA contract highlights exactly what's going to be taken care of in the investment grade audit, that finalized scope of work finalized cost. It details the IGA contingency fee, that contingency fee, what I will say on that, the IGA development is a four to six month period. After that six month period or so, we hand over our findings, our final design audit to the district. I would say often, or you know, very rarely do we see a case where a district would not move forward with construction after the IGA is presented. But in that case, the, there is a fee associated with that investment grade audit. If the project were to move forward, the the cost of that investment grant out is again, just rolled into the comprehensive. Cost of that financial model, as you mentioned, which is then covered by savings. So just one thing, that was one thing I wanted to mention there, just in understanding that process. But that IGA development, again, a four to six month period, we're finalizing everything. Once that is complete, again, talking about summer, which is really exciting, begin construction this summer. And depending on the scope of work, a six to 10 month construction period. And gosh, as soon as that first light bulb is installed, the district's going to be actually being able to capture those savings and realizing them. Which is very exciting and a great story to be able to tell your community. Lastly, the client services, that is ongoing through the life of this project. Where we do have that team that's measuring and verifying those savings on a, on a monthly basis and providing annual reports in the process. So a high level look at our timeline, a really exciting timeline, an optimistic timeline. I am an optimistic individual. But I do want to, I do want to stress, I very much enjoyed working with the staff, our team has, we've collaborated very well. We appreciate the partnership that we're beginning to develop and we're really excited to see, to see where this, to see where this projects can go. And I know that we're just about at time here and I'll leave, I'll leave a few minutes if there are any questions, but. We do really appreciate the time that we've had spent today.
Yeah. So if I could just add a quick follow-on statement and then open the floor up to some questions as well. First of all, thank you, Will and your team. Great job on the presentation. I think it summarizes a lot of what our conversations have been up to this point. So we were eager to hear just any additional feedback that we had from at least our three board members in attendance today. Recognizing that there is a lot to to process through. But hopefully this gives you a good sense of what's available in the way of an opportunity. And what I can tell you is our intent would be to move forward at this point. But certainly I'm open to any, any feedback or immediate questions that you may have as we talk through what these next steps look like for us.
I'll go ahead. Mr. Taylor, do you mind if I start off?
Please.
All right, refresh my recollection, Casey. This is, this is a proposal, so we're not executing any contracts. Therefore, we don't need to have a request for services. That's typically the methodology that we follow. Is that accurate?
So actually, this is an example of because everything is governed through state statute. And Will brought up the Colorado Energy Office before, we have the ability to work with a single source contract. As has been already described. So it's possible for us to either go with a single source or to open this up to a request for service or a request for proposal. Based on the work that we've done thus far and everything that we've learned. We believe that we have a lot of confidence in our ability to work productively with Schneider in that way. But Mr. Klassen, what you're calling out, I think, is is something that certainly we can, you know, engender more of a request for service if you think that is. One or a better step to take. But you know, certainly we're, we're feeling very confident in the way that this partnership is evolving with Schneider at this time.
Okay. First of all, I appreciate the presentation and I don't have any specific concerns. I just want to make sure that we're complying with Colorado law. And I know there's certain types of areas where we have to make the requests. So. As long as you and your team don't have any objections, I have no trepidation in moving forward with the proposal. Second question. You know, William, I'll ask you this, you know, great presentation. I believe Schneider is an international company, if that's right. Is that correct? So how much of a footprint do you have here in El Paso County?
In El Paso County, not too much of a footprint, believe it or not. We, we have completed, as I did mention earlier, over 850 projects nationwide. In the state of Colorado, we are, we have recently entered this state. Entering our second year here. So in regards to the actual physical, physical footprint in here. There aren't too many projects followed by, however, we have a support team out in Colorado that's based in Colorado. And we are eager to be able to get more projects under our, under our wing in the state of Colorado. And we use the support that we've learned in nearby states like Arizona and California to be able to guide our success that we've had in Colorado thus far. So it is exciting, but oh yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, Will.
I'm sorry, Will, and I would just add there too, our, our division of Schneider is, has entered a couple of years ago. Schneider is actually very present in Colorado. So we have a strong history here. I don't know, Robert, do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, as you say, we have like I office in Boulder County. We have an office of about 40 people there. We have a big office in Larimer County, up by Fort Collins, and several offices in the greater Denver area as well. So that's more where our personnel is concentrated.
And how many school districts have you worked with in the last three years for a project very similar to this?
Ooh, that's a great question.
Really good question.
School districts in, gosh, similar to this, I mean.
Well, well, not necessarily a similar school district, but a similar type project. So in other words, if we wanted to get a referral from another school district, who would we contact here in Colorado?
Matt, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. What, what we have actually done through this process, and Schneider has been great about providing multiple references for us. We're sitting on currently three primary districts, but there's 12 additional that Will has provided that can speak to what their experience has been, and we are in the process of that vetting as we speak. So I can tell you that, that that has been part of our due diligence and it's something that we are looking at, both from a short term as well as a longer term impact over time. So Holyoke being a good example of one that they've worked with more recently. We're also looking at some districts that have had this experience over a series of years and what that longer term impact has looked like. So I think it's a, a great question. I just wanted to make sure you knew that we have been vetting as we have, have gone through this process and I can provide that additional information for you. You know, offline.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. And as always, Dr. Summers, you seem to be one step ahead of us.
Great question, man. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Next question, and this might be a question for Shan or Chris Taylor. So if we undergo these projects, obviously there is going to be inherited inherent cost savings. But from the time that we do the project that we save the money, so to speak, how are we going to manage the cash flow for that?
So I can, I can take my first stab at that. The, the understanding that I have in terms of how we work to develop the game plan of what projects that are going to be associated with those savings are what we still have yet to decide. So it's really going to be a function of what do we want to accomplish with the savings that we will be able to see both upfront and then over time. And then depending upon our desire to go another step in addressing some of our deferred maintenance needs, there will be certainly an opportunity for the board to discuss where additional cash flow may come from. And I think that can, that's in alignment with conversations that we've had previously. What this will enable us to do is see additional dollars freed up, so to speak, that we wouldn't necessarily be able to experience otherwise. So I think Matt, basic bottom line is we, we'll see that initial savings upfront and then we'll be able to make determinations about what additional projects we may want to pursue as we go forward.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Yeah, let me add to what Matt just asked though, because there is a source of funding and what is the source of funding for this program?
The source of funding, the source of funding is what's already existing inside of your infrastructure. So essentially.
I, I understand that we could, you know, save $10 million over time, but we don't have $10 million to go spend on vegetables and boilers, et cetera. So I'm asking, what's the source of funding and what's the payback? I get the idea where the savings is coming from and that we literally, you know, are not going to reduce our, our budget, budgeted costs for operations and energy. What we're doing is we're, we're implementing a program wherein some of the energy savings will be diverted to loan payments. And I'm trying to understand what's the underlying funding mechanism here and who, who provides the funding?
Definitely. So we have a, we have an in-house financing team that assists our clients and our, and our school districts with finding, finding the right financing partner. So typically a financier would be any large, large providing bank. So I've actually already begun taking, we've taken a look at your financial audits and I've shared them with our in-house financing team. And essentially they begin their search to determine a good financing partner as that funding would come from a bank that would, that is familiar with energy, energy services, performance contracting. And that annual payment, they'd be looking at an amortization schedule that matches the savings, so to speak. So that is where the source of funding comes from.
Yeah. And I would just quickly add that they would actually, if, if needed, you know, if desired, we can actually release an RFP on behalf of the district to get as many financing partners to submit as possible to get the best term for the district. And at that point, you know, we don't make the decision on the financing that is up to the district, but we help move that process along and help bring the options to the table for the district to decide what is best for them.
Okay. So that would include our current banks, I'm assuming it can, that they could be a part of that process.
Absolutely.
So Matt, Matt, I hope that helps, that clarity helps me understand, you know, the cash flow, because we do have to get financing and that financing, you know, is a part of process they've been through several times, obviously. But that leads me to my, my one question, and that is you've worked on a number of these various type of projects and, you know, any, any kind of success usually has barriers that you have to overcome. What are the top three barriers to success? For this type of program, have you found and overcome? And what we should be mindful of as a community and as a school district?
So I, I have one, I guess, I, I could go on right off of that and then I could share with my team from a, from a funding perspective, we, we only can work with the savings that we find, right? So when we go in with the investment grade audit and we finalize, let's say halfway through that audit, we finalize, we, we have a good idea what final savings are looking like. There, there are the cases where the savings aren't able to cover everything in the scope of work, especially those more capital intensive needs that are heavy on the mechanical side. In that case, by statute, we can only provide a project that again, is ensuring that the savings are covering that annual payment. And other, you know, avenues like grant funding to serve as an upfront contribution or any capital dollars or reserve dollars that a district might have, they could input that those dollars as upfront contribution and in turn allow the ability to get the entire scope of work taken care of. But there are districts that don't want to spend their own dollars. They just want to rely on savings. That's the only thing they're going to be doing. And in that, in that sense, I would say it's a barrier because we're not able to get everything done that we would like to. And these are the things that we uncover in the investment grade audit, but again, working with the savings that we find. I would say that's, that's somewhat of a barrier. Does anyone else from my team have any barriers that stand out?
Will, I was going to add from a long-term standpoint, performance and driving savings is really dependent a, a lot on human behavior, right? We, we implement some tools that are, that make saving energy very easy and we provide a lot of support for it. But when districts have sort of dysfunctional administration where you may have the superintendent and the board moving one direction, the facilities folks moving another, and the principals and the leaders within each individual building moving a third direction, it can be very hard to make sure that the day-to-day choices for saving energy are made. So as long as you have good, strong leadership and people marching in the same direction or the ability to kind of marshal those troops together with two of those three, with, with the administration and the facilities team for sure, that vision can be realized. But when that's not there, it can be a challenge.
Sure. Absolutely. And.
Well, thank you. There's one, one thing there. That's the IGA contingency fee. And I, I know that the details are with the contract apparently, but briefly, what is that and, and?
Yep, absolutely. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you there at the end. The IGA contingency fee, as I did mention, is a, is a fee that is provided to the energy services company completing that audit. And it is only really a budgeted item for a school district if the project does not move forward after that audit is complete. And for our work in developing that, the, we base that fee off the Colorado Energy Office's standard template. More than happy to share what that template looks like, but it, it's, it's based on the size of the physical size of each buildings, the amount of square footage, as well as the physical distance located from the Colorado Energy Office in Denver. That develops a, an essential dollar per square foot of what the IGA contingency fee look like. And I believe for Louis Palmer, we're looking at an investment grade audit fee of just under $200,000 based on that table that we have to follow. So that is what the IGA fee will be looked on. But again, it is rolled into the cost of the project if, if the project does move forward.
So just to be clear, then there's approximately a $200,000 fee that the school district will incur if we go through the IGA and the program or the project doesn't commence or or doesn't come to fruition, there would be a $200,000 fee associated with this, this, this pro- project.
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay. That's our total downside risk if we do nothing, even though you've done a great job in explaining what we could do, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Well, and then one concern that I have is, you know, for example, our savings is based on current gas prices, electrical prices and so forth. You know, much like those that invested in, in solar panels to put on their houses here in Colorado, the, the net savings was not anywhere near what they thought it was. So with your analysis of what you believe our savings is going to be, I presume it's, it's based on current prices, not anticipating fluctuations. Is that correct?
So we've analyzed the savings with the prices to date and then we've made some forecasts based on some standard tools. You know, the, the federal government puts together a state-by-state rate escalator. But what we usually do in the investment grade audit is work with your local utilities to understand what their projections are in the near term and then try to use some of those other tools for long-term extrapolations. But ultimately it's a risk management choice that the district will make about how they want to value those savings in the future. And we'll try to do as much as we can educationally to, to make sure that that's aligned with the, the risk tolerance.
Okay. So real quick, Mr. Taylor, regarding our discussion around the IGA contract, our intent would be to have that placed on our December 14th board agenda for consideration and potential approval. So that was part of our intent to have the presentation done here in today's work session. And that's an item that would appear on the consent agenda again for December 14th.
I have some questions also. Can we go back to that timeline slide, please? Okay. So when we're looking at this timeline here in D38, our stakeholders desire and I even say demand to be involved and engaged. So besides the PR events, at what point during this timeline do you envision full opportunity for our stakeholders to be engaged and in, in this process?
That's a great question. I, I mean, I, I would ask, you know, this is again, the opportunity for us to work directly with the school district and ask you, is there, is, is the mindset, the earlier the better they get involved? Or because we're starting so early, let's say in January, to be able to begin to tell that story, there's so much to uncover there. We see a lot of our marketing tools and our PR events happening towards the tail end of that investment grade audit when there's more of that finalized scope of work projected. But you know, again, we'll, we'll work with the district on that if, if the opportunity, if we want us to come in for a, a regular board meeting where community members can be present and, and you know, see those recordings live and understand what that project looks like. We're more than happy to do that at any time that, that makes the most sense for the district. But does that give you an idea on, you know, the flexibility with that?
Yeah, kind of. What, where my mind goes to is in order for something like this to be successful, it really does require full engagement and full understanding and trust. And that our stakeholders have the confidence that this is the best decision, the most cost conservative decision with their tax dollars. And so if we, I just, Dr. Summers, to be quite honest, my, when, when I'm looking at this, my question is focused around how do we ensure success without, without setbacks?
Yeah. And Ms. Upchurch, where my mind was going was how or what would you define as the type of most appropriate engagement that you're referring to? I, I, I'm wondering, and let me, let me try to be a little more specific with that question. If, if by engagement, you're referring to how do we engage our community and whether or not we should do this? Or engagement in helping our community understand, here is what we are working toward accomplishing. Here's how we're going at it. Those types of activities, because I think we could, we could create engagement opportunities to say, what do you think? I, I guess my, my question there would be, what is that helping us gain? Is that an effort to determine the public's appetite to go one direction or another, or to, to just help explain more detail? So I, I appreciate that there's different ways of working to engage and I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand how you're defining that engagement that you're, you're speaking to right now.
Honestly, my first, my first response was yes to both and how that, what that looks like. Honestly, I don't know. I just know that whenever we've moved forward on something big, if, if we have not, if our, our community doesn't feel, if our community feels like they've been left out of the process, it seems like it has not always gone successfully. So I want to ensure that in this process that our, that our, that there's opportunity for involvement.
I think first step here, Casey, is that we need to make sure that the IGA contract is well reviewed by our, our council. We should make sure your vetting activity that you've talked to about earlier about Schneider and their successes in the past and their reference accounts are as complete as possible so that during our, our public board meeting that, you know, the due diligence that you're already doing is clear to everyone. It's pretty clear to me that, you know, the downside risk here is $200,000. If, if this doesn't pan out, it's going to cost your school district $200,000. Are, are you prepared to put that into the, the budget for next year as a potential, right, downside risk? And take it out of existing deferred maintenance planned activities? Because that's essentially, I think, what you're asking for. So I think just having it as transparent upfront as possible in our December board meeting would go a long ways to, I think, addressing what Tiffany's talking about. The whole pandemic and the fact that we're having a virtual meeting today, I mean, there's so many barriers to right now, public engagement. But we could do virtual meetings, we could do more. And I think with their existing there, meaning Schneider's existing communications capabilities, I think they could help the school district a lot by, you know, helping inform our community via virtual events, et cetera, in that Jada, January to May timeframe. And I think we should take advantage of everything they can bring to the table in this regard. So I think the key for me and to follow on what Tiffany's asking about is I think we just need to have a really clear picture right up front. You know, this is the IGA contract with Snyder Electric. This is our downside. If this doesn't go through for whatever reason, you know, it's part of our deferred maintenance budget next year that we'll have to, to absorb. And, you know, just, we have our vetting of their reference accounts. The contract itself is, is reviewed. Matt's comfortable with it. And if that's the case, you know, I think we'd be in a good position in December to, you know, ask the board approval.
That's very helpful information and clarity. So thank you for that description, Chris and Tiffany. I really appreciate that question upfront.
I do have one other question. First of all, the questions that my. First of all, the questions that my fellow board members have asked are all the questions I had written down as well. So I'm really enjoying this engagement and and I appreciate the vision and and in this and and the the presentation has been excellent. One clarify quick clarifying question, last clarifying question I had that wasn't answered yet was. So we're going through this and and when Chris was talking about the the downside is the gamble of that $200,000 investment. Would we fund those construction projects, for example, the vestibules? Would it be essentially, if I understand correctly, would that be the same as like a COP?
I'm sorry, can you can you clarify?
I don't think it I I'll I'll jump into that, Tiffany, and and try to do the best I can to answer it. It is not like it's part
It's a it's a bank loan, Casey. It's so let's keep it simple. It's not a COP, it's a bank loan.
Thanks, Chris.
So there would still be, there would still be interest and things like that on it, though, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Alrighty.
But there's also then the bank, the bank itself does their due diligence on this project as well. So it's you can look at it two ways there, right? You could also see that it's further due diligence in the project itself on because the banks themselves are going to do their financial risk assessment.
Okay. And then with Snyder, so with the construction, the bit, so the construction costs for those vestibules, would the bids would come from where again?
Well, Snyder acts as the master or the general contractors, I understand it. So they're our point of contact, they are, they are the contractor that we would be engaging with. And they would be the single sourcing of, you know, whether it's local contractors. I mean, I, we wouldn't talk too much about that concept, but, you know, they are the general contractor and they'll utilize whatever resources and that they need to make this successful. But the school district, as I understand it, we will have a contract with Snyder and our financing tool would be a bank.
Correct. And so like we're, we have pretty good success with Boiler, so I'm almost confident that we can get help with the best grant through that venue. But it's the the vestibules which are, I don't disagree are greatly needed, but I was just curious how we know, how do we find out what those costs are? What when we're committing to this, knowing what we would be looking at would be helpful, but I don't know how to get that done by the next board meeting.
Well, there was some history here. We actually went out to the public with a MLO to get some vegetables built, safety vegetables, and it didn't pass, but the work was done to identify those costs. So I I think Casey's team has those details already.
Thanks. If we could have that just readily at our fingertips again by or the the outline, I remember that as well. But if we have that information going forward into December, so we have a general idea, I think that'd be helpful, too.
Sure, understood.
Well, thank you, Dr. Summers. Thanks for coordinating all this, you and your team with Schneider folks. We appreciate the candid nature of this presentation and the open dialogue that we've had. And it looks very promising and and Casey would look forward to our meeting in December in a couple of weeks to, you know, to look at the contract and all the things we've spoken of today.
Thanks for that, Mr. Taylor. Thank you again, Schneider team, and we'll be in touch and and look forward to getting back and letting you know where we land.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care. Thank you.
All right, and let's go on to our work session number two item, strategic plan update, which is a focus on our goal three. I'm not sure if Ron's going to be involved today, but Matt and Ron are heading this area, working with Dr. Summers. So I'll leave it to you guys to start this discussion process.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. If you will just give me a moment, I inadvertently clicked out of my board doc page and just need to get back in there. Not a problem, Matt. I did share my screen with the goal three priority work and various objectives underneath, so I'm I'm not sure if that's visible. Are you guys seeing that right now?
I I am, thank you. So I had the privilege of working with Dr. Summers, Dr. Benton and Mr. Foster, and quite frankly, they were inter very helpful in in generating this. Mr. Schwartz and I feel very strongly as, you know, many of these aspects relate directly to our teachers and professional staff. So briefly going through it, deepen our professional learning and culture and shared commitment to continuous growth. In way of the refresher, these were kind of fleshed out to some degree during a board retreat. And subsections of this goal are promote a district culture committed to clearly define core values and shared commitments. Culture of working environment that yields a high level of employee performance. And support staff with meaningful systematic professional learning opportunities. And enhance employee recognition and appreciation. Develop sustainable and competitive compensation plans for teachers and all staff. So within these points, there's many subcategories. So I'd be more than happy to go through them, but just wanted to see if my fellow board members have any additional, any questions regarding these items? Or anything that you might want to add to this plan?
Well, without adding anything, I do want to say thank you for bringing this together and working with Dr. Summers and Dr. Benton and Bob. I I also am quite interested here in, this seems to be an area that, you know, the teachers at Prairie Winds, for example, or Kilmer, or any of the sites would be interested in weighing in on, and I'm assuming they have, I don't know that with any certainty. But I would like to hear, I guess, from Dr. Summers, what is the feedback mechanism here for this this goal with your staff and with your teachers across the district?
Yeah, thank you very much for that question, Mr. Taylor. I think the starting point for how to best address that is, as we know, in the times that we're currently working in, we could not do any of what we're doing right now without the support and the efforts of our staff. What I can tell you is we've not necessarily positioned this goal as part of the bigger strategic plan in any formal way where we've expected principals or their leadership teams or or any staff members to engage in a formal feedback loop, at least at this time. What we have in mind, and if I can for a moment, just give you an example, using the district culture committed to clearly define core values and shared commitments. I can tell you that every school is committed to a vision and a mission that really centers on every student's success. The values that are inherent in that work, quite honestly, are more informed at a site by site or school level right now than they perhaps are at more of a systemic level across the entire district. And so what we would envision, and this would be something that we could see happening when we're able to reengage ideally more in person types of interactions with our staff as we go into the spring. And we talk through how we are recommitting on an ongoing basis to the values that are reflective in the work that actually takes place when we think about how our staff are collaborating and how we're committing to ongoing learning and continuous improvement. And and ultimately seeing themselves in the plan. I think while this goal centers more on how that lives within a specific staff space, what we also are mindful of is that it it is comprehensive and embedded within all of the goals that we have within our strategic plan. So one of the things that we want to be intentional about is not just aspiring to a certain ideal and saying, here's what we think we're working toward accomplishing, but as we engender more of a shared commitment, what are the measurable behaviors that we can see and support with all of our staff to be able to ensure that we have a high level of performance? As well as opportunities for staff to be able to to call out, where are we strong, where do we need to get stronger? So hopefully that gives you at least a sense of the intent behind this. It's just been, we've obviously had our share of challenges in terms of creating enough time to be able to go into this this particular goal in more detail. And it's something that we just need to to call out as we're thinking about the work that that takes place at each of our sites. And quite honestly, across every department as well, this is not unique to just schools or our instructional staff. It's really about every staff member in the organization. And if I come back to what my goal that I would continue to aspire to being as one that represents a one team, our team type of a mindset, how do we see that every individual employee and team of employees working together is able to produce the type of quality teaching and learning and environmental supports that that really speak to every student's success? So hopefully that gives you a little bit of a a sense of how we're at least conceptualizing what this goal is with an intent to begin to to roll this out more formally and more systemically as we go forward into the spring and then build on that momentum into next year and beyond.
Well, thank you. And that's similar to the other goals, in fact, where we really, in every case, this is our beginning point. We're trying to identify the aim of what's ideal, quote unquote. And to that end, much like we had a a conversation around curriculum and instructional philosophy or pedagogy, or whatever that term was. You know, there's there's assessment, right? There's an assessment of our children. And that's to measure their growth. And in professional development, in my experience, I've found that generally speaking, you know, the professional development I've experienced throughout my career goes along the lines of, you know, what are the organizational goals? And how do my goals, my personal goals align with the the organization's goals? What development do I need as an individual to help, you know, achieve the goals of the organization and my personal goals? So that there's alignment and some sort of congruency between my behavior and that that the organization is looking for. So what is the so that happened to me, you know, semi annual reviews, individual one on one reviews, and then, you know, annual reviews. And those were constantly being modified. That's the process that I guess I'm looking at is where does that fit? Is that in like B, for example, this assessment process? Or how how do we measure growth here? Like growth for students, I get, but how are we measuring growth for our staff?
Do you want me to talk through C a little bit? Casey, and how we how we determine needs for professional development and support?
I think that'd be great. I I real quick before you do that, Lori, one of the things we wanted to not make this goal about entirely is just thinking about the evaluation process as the methodology that we're using to measure necessarily staff improvement or growth over time. It is a feature. It's it's a facet and, you know, according to Senate Bill 9191, we are still in the process of evaluating our staff each and every year, even though last year we we took a pause from that. But I think what Dr. Benton's about to share will give you a little bit more understanding of how that professional development philosophy or approach is informed by data. The other thing I'd like to call out is that this work is actually happening in ways that I would elevate and celebrate right now. Primarily through the implementation of professional learning communities within each of our schools. So Lori, I don't know if that'll thread into your answer or not, but feel free to take it from there and and shed some more light.
So a couple of different pieces of that, Chris. We we do evaluation of our training that we do for all teachers as well as new teachers. And so we're constantly looking at a combination of state requirements, which, as you know, we have a lot of those, as well as best practice, research based professional development. This last year, or I guess eight months, obviously, there's been a great focus on getting support for teachers and use of digital tools, helping students interact. So we did some quick focus groups this last spring with our our high end users, as well as some of our teachers who we were supporting more regularly and got a variety of input from them. We also then and crafted an initial draft of training that we needed to do for our teachers in the fall. Then we used the work group through the the DMG to be able to then refine what was needed within our professional development to then launch that PD in August where we trained staff. We then did more focus groups with our staff in September to determine if that was in fact what, you know, what else they needed. And then we tailored training at each individual site to support teachers further. Each of the principals then also work with their staff to collect information based on student feedback and based on parent feedback that they get to then tailor the approaches to additional, what we call job embedded and just in time professional development. That's in response to our existing situation. But we what we also try to do is we look at any of the curriculum that we've adopted, any of the new technology tools that we also provide training on those. So teachers can then utilize them in the classroom. And then you would see that impact in their evaluation, potentially within their evaluation document. Couple of other things. We, like I said, we do monitor the professional development that comes out from the district. We've in the past offered a two day summer learning academy that is actually taught by some of our our own teachers, they they propose things. We also do kind of a quick survey of staff to determine, you know, what they want for in terms of whether, and we usually have strands. So some of them are related to social emotional learning. Some are related to professional learning community processes, data analysis, everything from how to write a high quality assessment. And so we give them a lot of options. And then we we they choose the sessions that they want to attend. We obviously didn't do that this last year, but that's our typical process every summer. A couple of other things just to keep in mind is we also, from a district perspective, look at our data for student data through their unified improvement planning process to then determine what additional supports are needed. And the sites do the same thing with their own unified improvement plans. So we partner with them to provide some of the professional development, as well as help our our principals then utilize some of their own staff expertise or purchase professional development related to some of their areas of need. So it's a multi faceted approach, but it's also very differentiated so that our staff can see what types of professional development fit their specific job roles. The PLC process has been very influential in PD for our non traditional assessed groups like art, music, PE, so areas where it's very student participation based in terms of and performance based. Their PLC processes help drive their best practice and professional development that they need. So I hope it's a lot of words. You have any questions about all my words?
Well, I do, actually. If I were going to look at this screen today and say, okay, goal three is to deepen our professional learning culture and shared commitments to continuous growth. So where are we currently? And where are we headed? What's the what's the aim here? Because everything you're saying sounds like just what you do ongoing and what you are doing. And that's all good, but where are we? And where are we headed?
Well, right now, where we're at is we have an approach for professional development for professional staff. What where we also need to head is additional support for classified staff as well. And that's an area where we need to have a more comprehensive conversation of what additional supports and tools some of our classified employees need within their own professional learning.
Do you do you have a ideal state in mind that you're aiming toward? For this goal? Is it this goal just like the one about the Is it this goal, just like the one about the children, right, is ongoing, right?
Correct.
It will, it will change over time. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting there's one ideal state. I'm just saying. What's, where's the growth in the system here?
Well, the growth is, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay.
The growth, the growth in the system would be actually seen in student learning and student engagement. So if we are growing our professionals, we would also see it in retention. So that because our staff would feel valued by the the investments that we're making with them professionally. And so you would see it in a couple of different metrics.
Excellent. So we can, as we move forward, then those metrics can be shared periodically so that we can see how well we're doing.
Yeah. And remember, because it's so varied, I can look, we can look at our assessment data as one indicator in terms of student growth and whether or not within our unified improvement plan, the professional development and the goals. It's the same with the the literacy initiative that we're working on right now. We'll be putting in metrics to measure student growth utilizing those resources as well as whether or not the professional development is meeting the needs of the teachers. So we'll have different metrics along the way, but I honestly think one of the best things we can do is just ask. Do our staff feel invested in? Do they get the professional training that they need? Though and those are things that we get out of the TLCC data every other year as well. And we
That's what came to my mind. I don't recall the last time in in our TLCC data was not. When was it? I guess that's my question is when was it last talked about?
It should have, well, the TLCC data was is reviewed every other year and then it's shared publicly and it's shared on our website.
But I mean, have we had a conversation systemically about that recently? Because we didn't have it this past spring, but we would have it from the prior year. And I believe TLCC will be implemented again this upcoming spring. That is probably our best, at least in terms of staff feedback and metrics that we can present. I think that would be a great way to establish baseline data, Chris. And then to talk about what are some of the specific areas that we're trying to zero in on, which are further reflected in what we have currently shared here in the the beginning stages of this goal. So I, that could be something that if we wanted to take a deeper dive into it as early as even next meeting, I think we could we could zoom in on some of those features. Because we have district level data, but it also speaks to every individual school so that there's an opportunity for site based autonomy as well as a more systemic approach to some of those specific metrics.
And that data was shared two years ago, or I guess a year and a half ago. And teacher work groups looked at that data and it was shared. Each of the principals also shared their site based data with their their schools. But we can definitely pull out that professional learning one and and focus on that. I will tell you the feedback we constantly get is enough time.
Well, that that was, that was going to be another factor that I called out. I I think for us one potential opportunity with a little bit of low hanging fruit would be it it's typically the greatest challenge as we know, in terms of how do we find time? How do we create intentional professional learning time within our calendars and what we currently have available with what we've done in our calendar work is I think more or less what we have done. To what degree is that actually hitting the mark would be a really good question to ask our staff to get their feedback to say, here's what we are getting from that. Here's what we might be able to benefit from if we had more of it. And and then what are the calendar implications that come as a result? Bob, is that something you want to weigh in on at all?
Well, I think, I think the question of time has always been, you know, as, as you know, we looked at that as a as a committee two years ago up through last, up through last year, and that was a concern. And, you know, the teachers did have some ideas as to, yes, improving the calendar. How could we best adjust the calendar to afford them the best most amount of time to not only to not only for their own professional development, but for PLCs as Lori spoke about those PLCs.
Are we trying to share our screen with anything in particular? I was just wondering.
Sorry, I was trying to go to the calendar, but I I'm realizing I'm playing in Google.
I was like, are you, can I?
Share if I'm gonna do that. I promise I'm not trying to Google anything separate from our topic.
But that that was, that that was basically, did that get at what you were talking about, Dr.?
Well, I I think the bottom line is there's never enough of it. Potential way that we could envision a reset on our calendar would be, is there a way to create more opportunity for professional learning time within the scope of what we're already doing? And what would that require for us to do? Now, granted, we already approved our calendar for next year based on this last year, right?
Yes.
So I think, you know, any meaningful change that we would want to make is we don't want to just randomly propose a new calendar. What we want to do is be very intentional about what our goals would be in an effort to redesign some of our calendar. And it sounds like that would be an approach that we would want to be able to take more time going into next spring. If if we're going to be really serious about that, how do, we're going to have to have a more comprehensive group that's coming together that looks at it both from a staff perspective, but then anytime we're working with calendar, we recognize it's also going to impact families. So what I would suggest is if we're really going to zero in on time as one variable, that that becomes part of a game plan that we develop more feedback loops that are going to give us some good ideas to be able to say, here would be some options and some suggestions that we could propose for not necessarily next year's calendar, but the following year, right? It'd be a twenty two, twenty three proposition, not a twenty one, twenty two. Is that a fair?
Yes.
Okay. The the only other thing I would say, and we haven't really talked a whole lot about it up to this point today. And it would involve a lot more time and a lot more detail is understanding that sustainable and competitive compensation plans also involves greater, a greater degree of investigation and research to be able to assess what are all the different options that could be available to us. So that is work that we do envision beginning as we go into this upcoming budgeting cycle. Recognizing that I don't think we're going to be in a situation where we have all the more that we're looking for for next year. But again, that would be a longer term proposition. Where if we're talking about a redesign of our financial model or in the event that we're saying the best way forward would be to put the potential of an MLO increase on the ballot at some point down the road. I don't know that it's necessarily as early as next year, but if we're going to do our due diligence on that, we need to make sure that we begin that investigative process. Again, as we're going into this upcoming spring with more data to be able to determine what are those different possibilities that we're really trying to address? So I think we're getting a lot more of the weeds of of what that is. But all of that is comprehensive within this this bigger goal and then I think represents alignment or it, it, sorry, it's within our strategic plan. It's how this goal informs and is shaped by the other goals that we have.
So before we move on, when you speak of the weeds, I have a weed question. When you, Dr. Benton, when you say one of the feedbacks is more time, you might have said it and I missed it. Did you mean more time with students or more time in development?
Well, teachers will always take more time with students. And that, so that, that's just a given, especially related in in person learning. But what I, what it's in response to is time to collaborate and learn through the PLC process and time to invest in in their own, you know, professional growth. And so one of the pieces of the evaluation process is a SMART goal that every teacher writes and monitors growth in in their development throughout the year. And you know, a lot of that is done on their own time. A lot of that is done because they're invested in the outcomes for kids. And so there's always for time for professional learning. So it's, it's kind of, we talk about trying to do as much job embedded. But you know, anytime you're doing job embedded, it's taking time away from their planning for what's going to happen next with their students. So we have, when we talk about carving out intentional time, it's it's setting aside, this is, you know, professional learning community collaborative time. And this is individual student, you know, learning prep time and so forth. So it's both, I guess, but when we talk about the TLCC survey related to professional learning, they're talking about the time for professional learning.
Thanks. One other question I had. Sometime down the line as this is developing, I'm wondering if it would be valuable or helpful if we had, if we put together something that shows the the legislative piece of this, there's a big component to when Chris was talking about assessments, there's a big component to unfortunately, when we talk about high stakes assessments and why we ask students to show up for their assessments because that does affect teachers and how they are their, their, their quote unquote effectiveness, I guess. Is there a way to put together something that shows a a matrix of these assessments, how how each assessment affects teachers?
We, we actually do have a guide posted on our website that it's over hundred and sixty something pages long, I think. And it is our guide to teacher, our teacher effectiveness and how we now I'll tell you right now for this year, that's obviously suspended based on the stakeholder recommendations. And so we call it the other fifty percent are student learning outcomes. You could call it measures of student learning. It's part of Senate Bill one ninety one. But it does detail out how our, how our different assessments impact teacher evaluation. The, what I would tell you is the majority of, because our our students score well, the data for our teachers is is very strong. Because the district data and the site based data is very strong. And we, when we came up with our methodology, it is a balance of district data, site based data and individual teacher data. So twenty percent of the teacher's evaluation is individual data tied to them. And ten percent is district wide data and twenty percent is site based data. So.
I appreciate that because I I can recall when we talk about the, the, you look at the pie chart and the percentage of of what is considered a, by the state, an effective teacher.
Right.
And I don't think a lot of folks remember or recall. So every now and then having that, that refresher crash course on that is, I think, helpful.
Yeah, it even details the scales and yeah, there's all kinds of information. So.
Where on the website is that again?
So yeah, you do have to log in to have access since it's tied to assessment information, but it is it's under either you can get through it through the personnel services or you can get through it through learning services and assessment. So it's a, and I can just share the link with you too.
So is that something each of us as individual board members or as a community member can access?
You have, you can log into the website to see it. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Questions, comments, concerns?
My one comment is that number E is, that's always an important component. And so I appreciate Dr. Summers pointing to the need to continue to investigate that further. That's really important to me personally for several reasons, but thank you so much.
Well, and quite frankly, this is probably the, the one subsection of the goal that I do struggle with the the most, namely because we've tried to do so much throughout the years. We've tried to slice the apple so many different ways and I think we do need to do a better job for our teachers and support staff in way of compensation. So I appreciate your comments there, Miss Upchurch. Mr. Taylor, I don't have anything else, sir.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Dr. Summers, Dr. Benton, and Bob. I look forward to this the progression of all of our goals and the integration of them all into our strategic plan because I have learned a lot in the last few months as we've gone through the first four of these five goals. And I can see how they can align and I I look forward to seeing how that that takes shape as we move forward here. So the next agenda item is, Dr. Summers, an update?
Well, I don't have probably as much as what you are used to hearing from me, other than to say our break was one that I believe most people took the advantage and an opportunity to just relax and unwind and we're, we're grateful for the fact that we had that time to be able to at least press pause. We we've had a pretty fast restart. What I can share in, and this really speaks to again, appreciation and elevating the great work that our staff are doing. Our efforts at our elementary sites right now to maintain in person learning for as long and as much as possible is something that every staff member at the elementaries as well as some staff members from even our secondary and other departments are investing in and committing to. We we have a redeployment strategy which is allowing us to, for so, some of those folks that are working as much at the secondary levels because we don't have kids there now every day. That's giving us some flexibility and some additional coverage to help out at our elementary sites. I do want to elevate that we do have today, starting today, some modified in person learning supports for individual students who we have initially identified as as having exceptional needs. And so that's not necessarily available to every student. But it's something that we are working really creatively to ensure there is some degree of of in person interaction and our staff are doing a great job of still coming into work and delivering distance learning plans to all of our kids in the middle and high school age groups. Our hope would be to be able to return as early as possible into second semester to at least as a starting point, our hybrid model. But I think it is still a little bit early to determine if that will be able to happen as we sit here December first. As we know, our numbers are they've skyrocketed throughout the area. We know of multiple students and and staff members and also family members that have been impacted in in some very very hard ways. So this, this thing is, you know, not gotten any better. And unfortunately, it's, it's really kind of our as hard as it's been since we've started with this. But what I am still confident in and appreciative of is the fact that that we still are coming through this together as a community. We know that not everybody agrees with exactly the approach that we're taking. And that includes on on every side of the equation, but we are doing everything that we can to stay focused on what our key goals are in the implementation of these plans. And we're really looking forward to hopefully things turning, turning around as quickly as possible in terms of the numbers and the community exposure and getting back to, you know, some semblance of normal as soon as we possibly can. So with all that said, I'm happy to field any questions that you have, but that that's kind of where things sit right now. At a, at a moment's glance as of, as of today and fourteen more days before a break, another break.
I have just one question, Dr. Summers. Did you personally get some downtime during Thanksgiving break?
Yes, I did. Thank you for asking. And my wife made sure that I took it.
Matt or Tiffany?
Miss Upchurch, I'll let you go first.
I don't have a lot to cover from from our last meeting to this meeting. I am grateful, Dr. Summers, that you did enjoy some downtime. This afternoon, some of us board members from the Pikes Peak region will be meeting with our health officials to at for Q and A and asking questions and advocating. This is impacting a lot of us. I went from not knowing hardly anybody to a lot of, a lot of parents and kids and teachers that I know personally on a very personal level that this is real. Well, including, well, I even have, I, we have, and it's impacting our family. We have some loved ones that are fighting for their life right now. So. So it's tough. And it's also tough on our kids. It's still the mental health piece of it and that socialization piece is, is real. And it's, it's not to be dismissed either, I don't think. And I don't know what the answer to that approach is. So I'm very, I'm very mindful of that. The legislative session has gone into an emergency session to talk about funding and such, on how this affects everything from schools to the small business. So I'll be curious to see what comes out of that. But I wish everyone well, health and wellness. And also, remember to send an appreciation to your teachers. At the elementary level, it's easier, a little bit easier, because they're still in the building here at Lewis Palmer Elementary. Groups of parents have, have come together and we're feeding our teachers and sending them love and decorating the building. At the secondary level, that's a little harder, because the teachers aren't in the building on a regular basis. So just remembering, send an email just to say thank you. Just show that appreciation and go Bears, by the way. Love it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Upchurch. I, I echo Ms. Upchurch's comments. She, you know, it's truly the season of giving. And perhaps who's giving the most right now is our teachers, both their time and their emotions. So thank you, teachers. Also want to thank Ms. Wood. She's always the, the one that's organizing these meetings and doing a lot of the work behind the scenes. So thank you so much. And, and obviously, anyone that's directly or indirectly for affected by COVID, our thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany, and thank you, Matt. And thank you, Dr. Summers, for all your leadership. I appreciate the amount of focus that it takes. But I think the leadership that you provide and the alignment that I've seen in the schools with your district leadership is phenomenal. One of the things that I heard from Schneider Electric today was one of the biggest, one of the barriers of success, is sometimes that alignment, the leadership of a school district to realize. And so I appreciate, and that gives me greater confidence in, in that presentation and, and what the potential could be there to actually improve the security and safety of our children. At least those three schools, particularly as we look at those security festivals. I, I'm, I'm thrilled that we may have a solution that addresses a serious problem that's been known for a long time. And now it might be a chance to, to realize that. So thank you, Dr. Summers, for your, you and your team's efforts to, to think outside the box and to look at ways of trying to accomplish as much as possible within the limited resources that you currently have. Casby has their annual meeting this coming weekend. It's virtual this year, and I intend to attend and learn all I can from what other school districts and Casby as a whole is doing to, to help us in our, our opportunities and obligations as we serve as school board members. I'm grateful that there are resources available to, to help everyone during this pandemic. I appreciate that, you know, there's no, there's no clear path. And one thing I've learned since last March and April, when it was very fearful, is that we're all not going to die if we get this virus. And that's so much better than it was, you know, in March and April. The fear was pretty real. I look forward to hearing feedback from what Tiffany referred to as a Q and A with the, the local health department. And grateful for those students that are, you know, trying to get through this new synchronous online learning program that we have now through Christmas. And I, I hope and pray that each of them will, you know, have the support they need at their homes to get through that as well. We, we have a couple of kids in that situation and, and it does impact the whole family. I know the teachers are working hard. I, I realize that there's sacrifice across the way here. But I think the home environment is crucial now for those who are, are in that situation. I'm also extremely grateful, Dr. Summers, that our elementary schools are open and that our kids are able to attend those classes and have those relationships with those teachers and other students that are so crucial in this time of their life. I, I know we're not alone as a school district, but we're one of the few, I believe, school districts that are actually still having in-class learning. And I appreciate, again, your leadership, your commitment to it. And I, I hope and pray that we can continue that, that by the time the vaccines that are coming online are out and available to everyone, that we will have indeed actually the best job possible to get through this school year with the best benefit of our children in mind. I know that's not easy. And I know that you get lots of feedback from lots of different perspectives. And I appreciate, again, your leadership and your, your willingness to put yourself out there. And it, it's noticed, it's appreciated. And we will continue to support these good efforts, Dr. Summers.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Taylor and, and others. Appreciate, appreciate those comments.
I don't have anything else on this agenda, and I don't have a gavel. So I think I'll just say, till we meet again on December, when are we meeting again? December the... 14th. We, I want you all to take care, take care of yourselves, be healthy. And thank you.